Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's Twinsburg Board of Education Regular Meeting of Wednesday, August 1st, 2018. I will call the meeting to order at 7:10. Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
And Mr. Felberz Addison.
If you could all stand and join me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do have a need this evening to make a change to the agenda, so I will make a motion that we remove Mr. Mike Rochetko from the Classified Staff Recommendations in Item I-2, Action Items Personnel. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, second. Discussion. Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes 4-0 to change Item I-2. Good evening, and thank you again for attending tonight's meeting. As we near the start of another school year, I would like to thank our administration and staff for their hard work and efforts this summer completing numerous projects around the district and filling positions in preparation for the start of another successful year. As the summer comes to a close, I know, and another school year beginning is right around the corner, it is also a good time to point out where we are on our district's strategic planning flowchart. Due to the tremendous efforts and collaboration between the negotiating teams for the board and the Twinsburg Educational Association, fair and equitable contract was able to be reached for the next three years. The next step on our flowchart is the start of negotiations with the TSSA. In addition to that, as we have said in the past, the continued success of our district and the quality education that we provide to our students relies on the support of the community. As a part of that, and as has been highlighted on our flowchart, we have two more renewal levies coming up in the next few years. As such, this board will be deciding when to put these levies on the ballot to ensure financial stability of the district. We will also be looking at the next few years and extending our strategic planning flowchart into the future and addressing our facility's master plan and assessment. This work is vital for the future of our district, and more importantly, our students, and a job that this district does not take lightly. During this time, we will be asking our stakeholders for their input, as we have done so often in the past, and more importantly, for their support. I would ask that you reach out to our superintendent, our treasurer, myself, or one of my colleagues with any questions that you may have regarding these items. Superintendent Powers, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Solera. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, families and friends. So glad to see everybody here this evening. We apologize for the delay in starting this evening at the board office here at the Twinsburg Government Center, I should say. Well, Board of Education, I sent you an email last week that said something like, "The sleeping giant is slowly starting to awaken." And what I mean by that is today is August 1st, so we have so many students here, so many staff members are starting to come back to begin to prepare for the coming year. Our administrative team continues to interview for open positions. We're just about nearly fully staffed, but that work continues. As well as our maintenance, custodial grounds crew, they have been extremely busy, and I hope that the Board of Education and our residents appreciate the hard work of so many men and women here over the summer months. You know, oftentimes, we think that the school district is closed for the summer, and it's actually one of the very busiest seasons of the year because so many things happen with our facilities and grounds during that point of the year. Board of Education, our bus schedules will be mailed next week, probably near the end of the week of August 6th, and our district's calendar and annual report is currently at the printer. We expect it to be dropped into the mail on August 14th. I know our families and residents really appreciate that calendar, and so it will be in everyone's mailboxes shortly after the 14th of August. And then, of course, we're all getting prepared for Wednesday, August 22nd, which is the first day of the 2018-19 school year. So, so many things to happen yet between now and then, but it is a great time in the school district with so many activities going on. Parents will receive our back-to-school mailer this weekend. In fact, tomorrow at the board office, it is stuffing day. They have a lot of documents to put in envelopes, and so those mailers will go out, if not tomorrow, on Friday, so parents can expect the back-to-school mailer that has a lot of flyers, a lot of information about many of our booster groups. In fact, all of the booster groups, including our PTA, have information in this year's flyer. So please take a look at that. It will be in your mailboxes, parents, if not Saturday of this week, early next week. And included in that back-to-school mailer is our Power School Registration Snap Codes. Parents will need that information in order to submit or to revise any online information about your child, and that's really important information. And the more that that is accurately entered before the first day of school, it just makes the rollout of the school year all that more smooth. So, parents, please take a look at that Power School Registration Snap Code in your back-to-school mailer, and if you have any questions, on the mailer there will be a letter that has phone numbers that you can call to inquire if you have questions. Board of Education, we are offering a number of evening registration times for our new families, so beginning next week, on Monday, August 6th, on Tuesday, August 7th, and on Tuesday, August 14th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will have evening registration appointments over at Twinsburg High School. We ask our new parents to please go on the district website and to scroll down, when you click on the "For Parents" tab, scroll down for registration information, and once you are there, please create an account, and then you'll be able to preregister your child for an appointment on one of those dates. Also, our regular registration appointments are Tuesdays and Thursdays from 7:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. So if a morning appointment works better, we can accommodate you there. If you need an evening appointment, we have three days here in the month of August to get that in as well. And also, actually, tomorrow is our next round of screening and kindergarten registration over at Wilcox Primary School, so that is from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, trying to get our youngest tigers ready for school. Board of Education, I think I mentioned this to you before, but I wanted to say this publicly. We have 100% passage in the 3rd grade reading guarantee. This is the fifth year in a row that that is occurring over at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. And, you know, it starts at home with our parents being our children's earliest teachers, and from that point forward, we have excellent staff at Wilcox and excellent staff at Bissell, and really work hard on identifying strengths and accelerating, identifying weaknesses and accelerating strengths, and 100% passage for five years in a row. That's something that I hope the board is really proud of because that is a wonderful thing here in our school district. This weekend is Twins Day weekend. You will be seeing doubles and triples everywhere you go. This year's theme is the Two-Player Mode. I have no idea what that means, but I guess we'll find out in the parade on Saturday. And Board of Education, remember that Mr. Miller, who is in charge of the Twins Days, has provided our high school students with a wonderful opportunity. You know, we had students who were state champs in the month of June, and a lot of students that were placed in the OHSA last round of the championship track meet in Columbus, and we didn't have a way to celebrate these students. So Mr. Miller has invited our state champs and our state championship qualifiers from the entire 17-18 school year to participate in the parade. We are slot 31, and so look for our kids, and Twinnie will be there, the cheerleaders will be there, and the coaches, and I think the kids are going to just have a great time celebrating their excellent athletic performances of last school year. So we're very thankful to Mr. Miller for allowing us that opportunity to showcase some of our very finest athletes in the parade and a great coaching staff as well. And so that's it. Just a reminder again, that the first day of school is not too far away, 21 days away on August 22nd, and we will be ready. So that concludes my report, Board of Education, and then I wanted to segue. We have two special visitors here this evening, Mrs. Megan Eberhart and Ms. Allison Chance, who are from our Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce, and they are tremendous partners with the school district. Just last Monday, Mr. Potter and I were at Columbus, and we presented at the ODE's Career Connections Conference, and it was all about our academy at Twinsburg High School. And I have to tell you that the people who were attending the conference were intrigued by the strong partnership that we have with Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce and wanted to know more about how the chamber partnered with us to launch the academy at Twinsburg High School and what they can do in their communities to sort of copy the model. So we're excited about that, and we've been invited since that point to talk to other gatherings of high schools in this arena, talking about workforce development, and they asked for a few minutes this evening on the agenda to address the board. So welcome, welcome to go up to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Powers and school board members. Thank you for that introduction. That was great. At the chamber's member appreciation picnic last July, or last month, we recognized the 2018 Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce Chamber Champions. Now, if you think I can say that five times fast, forget it. It's not going to happen, but amongst those listed was the Twinsburg City School District, and we thank you so very much for giving Megan and I the opportunity to present this in person. We announced that at the member appreciation picnic as well, but we would like to present it to you in person, and one of the reasons you were recognized was for what you just mentioned. What began as a conversation, just a conversation with manufacturers in town about workforce development and the lack of being able to have quality employees spawned the idea for the academy at Twinsburg. And so with that, in the first success of the year, congratulations. And also, at the table, Superintendent Powers attended a couple of meetings with the Metropolitan Regional Transit Authority as well to highlight to them and to make them aware of the underserved areas in the community where parents didn't have an opportunity due to lack of their own personal transportation, that they didn't have public transportation to get to schools for school conferences, school events with their students. So those are just two of the things that you were recognized for. So thank you again for allowing us to present this to you in person, and we have a plaque here, and also David Joyce's office also has a certificate for you inside here. So thank you again, and continue the good work, and 21 days to the first day of school is hard to believe. So thank you very much.
(applause)
Yes. Get one by yourself first. You get one by yourself first.
Board of Education, one other thing. While we were presenting in Columbus, the Plain Dealer reporter, Patrick O'Donnell, was in the room the entire time, and he's writing a story about workforce development in northeast Ohio, so I'm anxiously waiting to see what he has to write, but he had a lot of questions about the chamber and the school district's partnership, and I'm hoping that it's going to be a really positive article. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Congratulations, Superintendent, and thank you again, too, to the chamber. You guys are great partners to the district and look forward to continuing that relationship, and thank you very much for honoring Superintendent Powers for all her work and dedication.
Thank you.
Any committee reports? Moving on, I see you've got administrative report. Superintendent Powers?
Yes, thank you. So Board of Education, more than a year ago, the school district recognized that we had a soft spot in some of our programming for our students, and we knew that in a community which is comprised of such a fabric of ethnic diversity, socioeconomic diversity, religious diversity, that we, as a school district, should provide some educational opportunities for students to feel great about who they are and to have understandings about who other students are, and just an opportunity for them to appreciate the diversity of our community. And so we interviewed a number of organizations, and as you know, a year ago, we introduced our friends from the Diversity Center of northeast Ohio, and here this evening is Ms. Jasmine King, and she has been instrumental in launching the program at three of our schools, and this evening, she wanted to present to you a summary of what happened last year, some of the data that was collected, some of the opportunities provided our students, and the connections moving forward into the next school year. So welcome. I'm so glad that you're here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to first thank you guys for giving us the opportunity. This is the very first time that we've been able to partner with Twinsburg City Schools, and we love to have this very first touch point to the school district. This is the largest district that we've worked with by number, especially with our elementary school, the largest, one of the largest contracts that we have done, and I think that we've tried to work really, really hard to make sure that we presented at each level of the level what each of the principals has wanted us to present. And I'm going to show you just a small snapshot, and if you guys have questions, we'll jump in. There were two small changes that I've made to the slides, and you'll see the corrections on the screen versus in what is printed for you. So we'll start with Dodge, and with Dodge, we have 300, just a little over 300 students that we work with. We decided to work with the 4th grade population, and the first thing that we did was the cultural climate survey. We completed this with educators at each grade level as well as all the 4th grade students. We also contracted for four in-school or in-class sessions, so Rethink Labels, Anti-Bullying, Diversity 101, and Action Planet, and I'll talk a little bit more about those as we move along. This is the school that I was able to certify elementary as well as 4th through 12th, and so I got a chance to jump in and do the most sessions in the elementary arena. So I spent the most time in your district in the 4th grade group, and I really do love what they're doing over at Dodge, so I agree with you. And to hear what the 4th grade group is doing, that's awesome. From the cultural climate survey, what you're going to see is a snapshot of some of the questions. And so what we did with the cultural climate survey is we took a look at the data. We asked the students some very specific questions, and based off of those, it gave the principals, it gave the counselors, the educators kind of a snapshot of what they should focus on for the year, as well as what we should focus on in our program. And so some of the examples are, I kept mean or hurtful things said to me by another student at school this year. So as you see, 64% of the students would say true. And so the counselors say, "This is a great way to lead into conversations when they go in and talk to the students." Additional questions that I put, I wanted to stay home from school this year to avoid conflict rumor being made fun of by another student. So if you see, 47% said no, but you had over 50% of the students in 4th grade say that they wanted to stay home to avoid a conflict or rumor. I think for Dodge, this was the question that they were most surprised about, 4th grade students. I stand up for others when they are bullied, that's cool, online, and you had 37% say a great deal that they stand up. So that was a great response, that a lot of them said that they stand up. But if you look at it, 10%, so about 30 students, about 32 students say they never stand up to a bully. And so that really stood out to your counselors as well, to say, "How can we empower those students? Even if it's just a couple of students, what conversations can we have?" And then the last thing we asked the kids, "What diversity topics do you think we should talk about more at school?" And some of the kids had questions, and we talked to them, walked through each of the topics, and they selected the top three, gender, bullying, and leadership. And so as you see, the selections that they made, when we look at the educator data, it was right in line with what the educator, the superintendent, the principal wanted to cover. The educator topics we selected, what we did is we broke down the educators into groups. So we started at 4th grade teachers, 5th grade teachers, and 6th grade teachers. We did not work directly with the business 6th grade, but the data gave them something to talk about, of where they could possibly focus in their classrooms and selective reading. If you see a highlighter across the board, each of them thought body image and stigma was something that they should focus on. It wasn't anything that we focused on this year, but it also led conversations with your educators, principals, and with your counselors. If you see, bullying for 4th and 5th grade and leadership for 5th and 6th grade were also overlapping, so they had conversations around how can they pull 4th and 5th grade together and 5th and 6th grade together to talk about these areas. Each of the in-class sessions that we did were focused on a book. So these are the four stories that we focused on, so there's literacy-based curriculum, and the kids loved the stories, and as soon as they would see myself or Tamia Ellis, other program specialists, they would say, "Oh, we're going to read a story today." And yes, we read a story each time we came, and all of our lesson activities was focused around the story. At the end of each session for Dodge, we did an exit slip. And so, for example, spaghetti and hot dog bun is one of the stories. These were one of the things the students said. So we had over 300 exit slips that we typed up and gave to the principals, so they had those things. So I learned that not everyone is not the same, that some are mean, some are not nice, not to anyone just by how they look. And then the last one, I learned not to be mean back to a person when you have a chance, like when they're in trouble, you should help them, and that's part of the story. So the bully, the person, had a chance to be mean to the bully, and she decided not to, and she decided to help him. So really great messaging story. So we move on. Any questions about the elementary? So Dodge.
Is this, okay, here we go. Any questions about Dodge thus far? Okay, so we'll move on to Chamberlain Middle School. And so we had over 347 7th grade students, over 310 8th grade students. We did complete the cultural climate survey, also with the educators and 7th and 8th grade. We did not break the educators down by grade levels here. We had them do it all together. They were able to participate in our annual middle school spring conference. Our topic was immigration in American snapshot, and so this was an additional piece for your middle school students. And the in-class sessions, as we see, were a little bit different between 7th and 8th grade. We really worked with administration to pick topics that they thought were going to be definitely tied to the curriculum. So Rethink Labels for both of them, Diversity 101, Action Planet, and Cyberbullying for 7th grade, and then for 8th grade, we talked about bullying prevention and student leadership. So some example of 7th grade data. How many times have you heard someone called stupid, dumb, or made fun of for learning differently than others at school? And so you have a huge amount of students, about 44% of the students say more than 10 times. And so this has been a big one, and your district is not the only district that is dealing with kind of these lack of respect for learning differences if someone learns differently, and so this has been a huge piece across all of the schools that we are working with. How many times have you heard racial slurs used at school? And so if we say, if you look at one to three times, which is 28%, a small amount, but then if you look at more than 10 times, 24%. And so a lot of times, we get a little pushback from the educators, and they say, "Well, sometimes the kids are just, they use it as endearment, or they're playing." But we think about intent versus impact, and we talk about that. And so do the teachers kind of let it go when they hear these racial slurs, or do they address it? And these are some of the things that we talked about with the educators. How many times have you heard a girl called negative names related to dress, look, or behavior at school and online? They are beginning to talk more and more about social media and the things that they're posting on social media, and so we had a couple of questions to address social media use, so the schools and the counselors can kind of look at that and see how they can address these. And then the other one here has to do with body image. How often do you hear people called fat or ugly at school or online by students from the school? And as you see, a great deal at 27%. So this kind of just gives you some data overall. This is the one that really stands out to most people, and actually, your counselors, they look at this. When you think 30%, you're still thinking a high number of students that have wanted to stay home to avoid a rumor or conflict, and they're not surprised with middle school, and we're talking with the counselors, they know that they deal with conflict at middle school a lot. All right. And then the topics that they said that they would like to address would be body image, race, and bullying, and so we really hit it on the head with talking about body, I'm sorry, talking about bullying. And then with 8th grade, if we move on, you'll see, how many times have you heard someone called stupid, dumb, or made fun of? More than 10 times, that's about 50% of the students. And so again, the same sort of overlapping kind of themes that the counselors are able to pull from this data to see where they can address during the year. How many times have you heard a guy told to stop acting like a girl or caught a homophobic slur? This seems to be more of kind of the issue in the 8th grade that we're seeing, the homophobic slurs. I have witnessed, experienced intolerance when individuals discover someone's sexual orientation, and so you see that there are some discrepancies there, so more than five times is 11%, more than 10 times is 11%. So there are some conversations that the counselor said that they could possibly have around these topics as well. I wanted to stay home from school to avoid a conflict rumor or being made fun of. We were happy with 58% being zero, but then you still see one to three times being 23%. So again, just taking this data and kind of thinking, with 23% of the population, with over 300 8th graders, we're talking about 60 students that have wanted to stay home, and then what do we do to make those kids feel comfortable in school? And then what diversity topics do they want to see addressed? Actually, it's a little different here. You'll see gender, immigration, and leadership. Okay? So those are the topics that 8th graders said they wanted to see addressed. As far as your educators in the building, bullying prevention and cyberbullying was number one, race and ethnicity, two, and then you had a tie, it was at 14% each for socioeconomic and body image and stigma. And so again, this data drives the conversations that they can have during a school year. Any questions about Chamberlain? Okay, and I know I'm speeding through this. In the workshop, oh, this is, I think this was the last slide, yes, 23% overall average increase in knowledge acquisition. So in each of the sessions, we did pre and post tests, and we saw a 23% increase in students. So when they came in, they may have only been able to answer one of the questions, and then they were able to answer two of the questions at the end, or three of the questions at the end. So we did pre and post tests at each of the sessions to see if there would be an increase in knowledge acquisition. Again, 40 minutes, that's all we have, so that's pretty good for 40 minutes. That's us coming in, having a conversation in 40 minutes, taking a pre and post test, and just trying to see where the kids are gaining. Overall, very quiet group, some of the best middle school students we have ever worked with. You have really, really great middle school kids. All right, Twinsburg High School, our bread and butter. 310, and I may, if, look, we have one of the principals here, so he might be able to jump in and kind of give, like, I'm putting you on the spot here. Look, you paying attention, I need the mic for a second. So 9th grade students, that's who we worked with, but we had a chance to, with the next team, train student facilitators. And how training of student facilitators works is we were able to work with about 30 student leaders to actually come in when we do the sessions to help lead the icebreakers in some of the activities. So this is a really, really great opportunity for your student leaders. And so Popovich was able to select about 30 students. We were able to train, and I was able, I had the privilege to actually do the student facilitation training, and I will say that you have some of the most passionate students about diversity topics. I think I only have one other school that has students that are as passionate as yours. I can't wait to put them together one day about diversity topics. We were able to complete the survey with entire staff. We were also able to complete the cultural climate survey with 9th grade. Your school group was able to have three teams come to spring conference. They had a great experience, heard nothing but great things about that. In the in-class sessions, Diversity 101, Religious Tolerance and Respect, Cyberbullying, we focused on problem solving, Action Planet, and Rethink Labels. Those were the four sessions. So with the 9th grade data, how many times have you heard someone called stupid, dumb, or made fun of for learning differently at school? When we see more than 10 times at 42%, and more than five times at 17%, we understand that this is something that the kids, they say that they're just playing, it's kind of ranking, things of that nature, but again, we look at intent versus impact, and we talk to the students about the power of their words and what that means. How many times have you heard a guy told to stop acting like a girl called a homophobic slur? We see again, 29% at more than 10%, more than 5%, 15%. Again, this is data that the counselors can use to drive conversations and possible programming. How many times have you heard racial slurs at school? 45%. So again, we're pulling some of the same sort of questions and looking at the same data. How many times have you heard a girl called negative names related to dress? 39%. Again, more than 5% would be 15, or more than five times, 15%. I've wanted to stay home from school to avoid a conflict rumor being made fun of by another student. So good numbers at zero times being 57%. So 57% of the students say that's not something that they address or they deal with, but you do have a small percentage of students, a little over 40% that do, and this is where the counselors want to hone in on those students. And then what diversity topics, and they have two 39%. Again, more than 5% would be 15, or more than five times, 15%. I've wanted to stay home from school to avoid a conflict rumor being made fun of by another student. So good numbers at zero times being 57%. So 57% of the students say that's not something that they address or they deal with. But you do have a small percentage of students, a little over 40% that do. And this is where the counselors want to hone in on those students. And then what diversity topics, and they had two top, or they had two that were really close, like a 12% to 13%. So they want to talk about body image, LGBT issues, race and ethnicity, and bullying. And we're actually really surprised that at the high school level, they selected bullying. Because usually it's at the high school level when we go in and talk about bullying. They're like, "Oh, nobody really gets bullied, that's not what it's called." They don't like to hear kind of that terminology. But they selected it as something they wanted to see addressed more at school. The educators said number one, bullying prevention and cyberbullying. The second one the educator said was race and ethnicity, and the third was leadership. And then as far as the in-class diversity workshops, we saw 14% overall average increase in knowledge acquisition. The high school students, I was able to sit in one sess- one session. It is really hard to pull conversations out of those high school students. And I know that was one thing you guys were worried about. And it takes a while for them to get used to us. Student leaders were great help during the sessions. And that's why I said we did that student facilitation training with. They were very passionate about the topics and they really would like to see a diversity club started at the high school. And I'm really hoping that we'll be able to do that this year. And then I added in here about spring conference. Your large group seemed to truly enjoy the conference. You had 24 students that were able to attend and up to six educators. And I believe you had a couple of counselors and Popovich was able to attend as well. And they were engaged in the activities and suggested ideas of how they can help improve the climate at the high school. We would like to thank you. Thank the Twinsburg family for a great 2017, 2018 school year. And we look forward to extending the partnership. I think we had a really, really great school year. We had nothing but great feedback from the educators and from the students. So hopefully we'll be able to extend that. I don't know if you would like to, can he have a minute?
Sure.
I was hoping one principal would be here at all. You were in the school, so you heard what the students were talking about. You saw, and so that's for us, we're there and we leave. You know, we're there for 45 minutes or we're there for two hours and we leave. And so it's really a big testament to the principals and individuals. And I've had, so Solon High School is an example, who said, "You know what? After the third year," it's hard to gauge culture and climate in one year. She said, after the third year, she said, "We saw a change because we were able to leverage vocabulary, we were able to define what respect looked like across the board, and we got momentum." And so again, we're perfect again with Solon again this year. But, you know, years, and we talked about this before, one year is hard to gauge. You know, you gotta kind of build with the momentum. And so, and I'll talk a little bit about what this year could look like in a second, but...
From my perspective, looking at the diversity center, this was something that, when you have new programs coming to the school, you're always kind of standoffish and you're kind of leery about new people coming in and everything. But I will say, from when they started to the time it ended, they became a part of our culture of Twinsburg High School. You know, from just knowing that when you were coming in, just getting into the health classes and the freshman orientation classes and being able to split that up. And it's something about freshmen because that's really setting the stage for them for the next four years or the next three years. And to be able to get these topic out, these topics out there, I am in 100% agreement. We should have a diversity club at the high school and I would love to get that started. And pulling those conversations from these freshmen, it is hard, you know? Because honestly, you have to build that trust level of, hey, what we say, it's going to stay in here, it's okay to have an opinion, those sort of things. So i- it's more than just a diversity center and building and talking about these topics, but it's actually giving students confidence in order to stand up and speak their mind. You know, because a lot of the students, they don't want to say what they really feel because they're afraid of what other kids may think, you know? And I think that ties in with the bullying, the cyberbullying, all those sorts of things. So definitely, from the perspective of the high school, this is something that should continue. I'll say that. This is not something that should go away. And we would like to see the maturity and the growth of our freshmen and that new culture and the culture where they're learning about diversity and being accepting of others and everyone else continue to grow over time. So from my opinion, I thought it was a great program. Look forward to having you back next year, honestly, so.
Any questions? Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
So when, when the kids filled out these surveys or were questioned, was there a place for commenting or to dive deeper into some of these questions that they were asked? Because things that stick out in my mind kind of are like, like with bullying, kids will give excuse, or people might give excuses, like for an example, "Oh, it's just boys being boys." Or on the flip side, some of these kids are maybe making thoughtless remarks that they wish would have taken back and they didn't see it as bullying where others would definitely see it as bullying. And another thing that sticks out in my mind, and I'm wondering how far, like how these conversations came maybe after these surveys, is when you hear things like racial slurs. Well, like some of these kids in their everyday music and conversation think it's funny to just speak the way they do or say things the way they do where other people are completely appalled and find it inappropriate.
Right.
So I'm wondering, after these surveys, what kind of conversations took place?
So in some districts, they want us to hold the conversations with the students. So we weren't contracted to do that this year with Twinsburg. We held the conversations with the educators. And so we placed the data into the educators' hands. Now, what the educators did afterwards, I can't vouch for what happened at each school. And so I know at Dodge, because I work directly with her, that she was instrumental. We sat down, we looked at those. She pinpointed what she wanted to take back to the individual classrooms because she did individual class sessions. And she created sessions that focused around these. So she says she visited with the classes, like every other month or something like that, she would be in each of those classes. Now, at the high school level, it's a tad bit harder. It is a tad bit harder. The school that we contracted with to go through the data, we do get great conversations. We do. Again, it's short, it's 45 minutes. And it is just kind of a snapshot and it's a shotgun. It really is. So the question is, when you get data like this, how do you begin to incorporate these conversations on a regular basis? And this is where you challenge your educators. Are your educators being challenged to address these biases that some of these students have? And many of them get them from school. I mean, I'm sorry, many of them get them from home and they have, they bring these biases to school. And then they say things that are very offensive to other people. And so we did, we leave that up to the educators. We did present the data to every group of educators, the entire group. So not just the 4th grade group, but the entire Dodge staff, the entire Chamberlain staff, the entire high school staff, to present the data to them. And now what they did with the data, it was up to each individual principal and counselors. And so moving forward, it could be something where there is more of a kind of tie-in. So for example, the one school where we worked directly with the students to look at the data, and they actually came up with plans of how they can. They picked ones that they thought were most important to address and they came up with plans of how they can make a difference. But that school's focus was on changing culture and climate and they were putting their responsibility on the kids. And this was a high school. Yeah. So it just depends on the district and how far they want to go with it.
Board of Education, remember, we have our PBIS initiative. So this dovetails quite nicely with the programs that we have through Beechbrook, through the Beechbrook Social Workers, and then of course, through our school counselors. So Jasmine and her staff work closely with our staff, especially the principals and the counselors, Beechbrook staff, and provide opportunities for students there through those kinds of initiatives. The other thing is, you mentioned, Mr. Solon mentioned, that at the high school, this is introduced through our success class at 9th grade. When we were looking at bringing onboard some programming to address some issues related to diversity, we, as an administrative team and the counseling staff, identified 4th grade, the middle school in totality, and 9th grade as four spots where we thought kids were ripe for this kind of conversation. Now, of course, what you present at the high school is not going to be the same exact lesson that you're going to present to 4th grade children at Dodge. But the rethink labels, for example, was an activity where kids were challenged to consider how they think about other people and what kind of labels they put on other people and how that could be hurtful. And you could use that kind of lesson from, you know, 9-year-olds all the way through high school kids. So I appreciate Ms. King and her very, very wonderful staff that were able to connect with our principals initially, the school counselors, then the staff. And we look forward to connecting further this coming school year. Principal's meeting in June, we talked through the positives and negatives of all of our programming, taking a look at all our district goals. And the principals and the administrative team determined that the relationship with Beechbrook and then with the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio were the two strongest partnerships that they want to look forward to moving into the future with, with the new school year. So we look forward to doing that in the 18, 19 school year.
Yeah, I would, for one, I like the fact that, you know, it seems to me that it's a natural integration that we would, you know, include this in our PBIS framework. I'm really happy that, for one, we took the initiative to engage with you guys. I think it's appropriate. I think it's, you know, I think these are things we probably should have been doing, you know, in prior years, but I'm happy that we finally kind of taking the initiative to do it now. Given, you know, just given, just, just given the climate, you know, if you will. Two things, I like the fact that you guys did, did exit slips. Because that's really a tried and true way of, you know, getting, you know, good formative data that tells you immediately what kids learned and whether or not what you taught them, whether or not it, they got it. And so I think that for the limited amount of time that you were there, I thought that that was pretty significant, you know, based on what the data says. The other piece is that, you know, based on some of the trends that I saw throughout each building, I found it interesting and I thought that there was alignment with what's going on currently in our social and political environment. Did you find that to be the case or did you find that there was some significance or there's some carryover with respect to, you know, those two things, social and political environment and what the kids are talking about?
Especially in the middle school or high school. Because they are ripe for conversation. And especially in the middle school, most of their opinion is whose opinion? It's their parents' opinion at that time. In middle school, most of their opinion is their parents' opinion. So they're, they're hearing what their parents are saying and they're kind of regurgitating it for many of them. In high school, you begin to see a little bit different. This is where they're standing out. And they'll say, "My parents believe this, but I believe this." And they kind of take a stand. But yes, so across, not only this district, but across all of the districts.
And that's what I mean, like...
We are seeing huge, and we are talking what is called diversity in thought. Because the political diversity has been the huge challenge, especially in our high schools. That we are having high school students that are, I'm Republican, I'm Democrat, and they are kind of going at it. And so we have this whole conversation now about diversity in thought and then how do we respect individuals embracing it? So yes.
Appreciate your efforts. Some very interesting data there. Some eye-opening data and kind of, you know, now is the time, you know, we've spent the time collecting the data. I appreciate what you've done there and now is the time, you know, like you said, is to, you know, take that and how do we change that culture? You know, what do we do to, you know, move forward and kind of, you know, make some of these numbers a little less? So I appreciate it. Look forward to kind of some follow-up over the next few years and see kind of what we're doing now, if we've taken the first step and how are we going to address it? So thank you.
As we move forward, some of the things that we talked about is curriculum alignment, you know, taking a look at the data and then taking a look at the books that the students are reading and how can we make sure that we're having those conversations? Additional conversations that we had, possibly about extending the conversation to the parents. And so that's something that we could, you know, talk about, offering workshops on bullying and what that language looks like for the parents. Moving forward, we would be able to meet with each of the principals and say, "Okay, what did we do last year? How do we want to expand on it? Do we want to resurvey?" So when we go into the high school, do we want to survey the 10th graders coming right off the rip to see if 9th grade made a difference? And we know that you guys have tons of programs that go beyond just us, but does the data say something different? So surveying the 10th graders, but also surveying the 9th graders. And then we start from that 9th grade group. Very interesting though, the 8th graders have had basic training. So we get to step it up a notch. So what is your turnover rate from 8th to 9th grade? Probably about 95% retention, maybe even higher. So 95% of those students have had the base work. So now we can move to another level. So now we can go into 9th grade, we could talk more about student leadership, we can dive into race and ethnicity, we can really dive into deeper conversations because they've had it at the 8th grade level. And so same thing with, you know, the, the 4th grade students are now 5th graders. How can we use those as student leaders now? And if we're able to work with that 4th grade group, bring some of those 5th graders back in. So each year that we work at a school, and Rocky River is a great example of this, that we've expanded programming and we are so kind of integrated into what they do now. We have multiple pieces and multiple levels that it's, just like we said, it's part of the culture now. It's part of the culture, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jasmine, for being here this evening. We look forward to those conversations with the principals in early September then.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to Agenda Item G. Marty, I don't know if you have any blue cards for remonstrance today?
No blue cards.
Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items H1 through 3. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes. Regular meeting of June 27, 2018 is sent to the board under separate cover. H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of June 2018, Bank Reconciliation, General Fund Financial Summary Report, and Financial Report by Fund as sent to the board under separate cover. And H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of June 2018. The total, including payroll, is $4,510,463.54. To have a motion to accept Items H1 through 3. Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, second. Any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Without objection from my colleagues, I'll read Items I1 through 3. I1, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I2, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I3, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Have a motion to accept Items I1 through 3 as read.
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis? As a reminder, in Item I2, as we said at the beginning of the meeting and made the motion that was approved, Mr. Mike Rochetko's name is removed from that list under Item I2. And then Superintendent Powers, if you have any discussion? I know we've got a new assistant principal you might want to introduce to us.
We do. I'm going to walk over to the podium because I don't have a microphone. Board of Education, as you can see, he still is not aware that Mr. Solon is no longer an assistant principal. So we'll get him, everybody will get there sooner or later, right? But it is because Mr. Solon was promoted to supervisor personnel that there is a position now available at Twinsburg High School. And thanks to the leadership of Dr. Hebert, who has joined us this evening, a number of principals, a number of teachers at the high school, and the central office administrative team, we were able to find a candidate that we believe is well-suited to be the next assistant principal at Twinsburg High School. So I'd like to ask John Moschberger to please come forward. This is John. He is my recommendation this evening as assistant principal at Twinsburg High School. John comes to us from Avon Local Schools, where he was employed since the 2013-14 school year as a social studies teacher, an AP US history teacher, an AP European history teacher. And he also had administrative oversight for Avon Academy, which is the Avon Local School District's credit recovery program. They do their TAP a little different. They do their TAP a little different. Their TAP kind of program is in the evenings after school, and Mr. Moschberger had administrative responsibility to oversee that program, to make sure students got the credits that they needed to graduate and to go on to their next whatever in their life. Mr. Moschberger earned his bachelor's degree from John Carroll University and his master's degree from Wheeling Jesuit University, and he resides up north, that community up north. We won't mention the name here. That's okay, he's going to be a Tiger now. And so, he's a graduate of Soulin High School, and I overheard Mr. Popovich saying that he probably saw Mr. Moschberger compete as an athlete, because I believe he was a three-sport athlete in high school. So, I'm going to let you say a few words here, and please introduce your family, too.
I would like to thank Mrs. Powers and the board for this incredible opportunity. I would also like to thank my family who's here tonight, my dad, John, my mom, Mary Ann, my sister Julie, my girlfriend Noble. The guys have always been super supportive of my goals, and I appreciate that. For me, this is more than a job, this is a destination. Having grown up in that town up north, less than 10 minutes away, I've always understood the excellence and the tradition of the school district, of this community, and I'm incredibly grateful to be a part of this team, and can't wait to start. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to, we can vote, or we can, if there's any more discussion before we call a roll.
So, you are from that town up north, but, well, we took Tim, you know, we didn't hold it against him, because his wife, you know, works in Soulin as well, so I'm going to, me personally, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt. But, no, all kidding aside, I'm always happy to welcome people to Twinsburg, welcome, whether they be administrators, whether they be teachers, whether they be line staff, it doesn't matter. We take a lot of care, and we're very diligent and thorough in making sure that every employee is a good fit for this district. There is definitely a culture in this district. Our motto is a tradition of excellence, and we've held that model for some time now, and, you know, we believe in it. So, the extent to which you've been chosen to come to Twinsburg, I think is a big deal. It means a lot to us that you want to be here, and I think that you're going to make an impact within the district, but also within the high school. So, I'm looking forward to seeing you, seeing your face when we come to events at the high school. Looking forward to seeing you engage with our students and embark on this new experience that you're going to be able to do here in our district. So, welcome aboard, and congratulations.
Yeah, definitely. Welcome to Twinsburg, and as Mark said, we look forward to seeing you around and about. And welcome, Ms. Hebert, who we've, you've been hired, but we haven't really, I haven't seen you in person yet, so I would like to welcome you here as well.
Oh, it's your first day.
Yes, yeah, so, welcome to both of you at our high school.
Again, congratulations. You know, heard quite a few good things about you in the short time that we knew that this was coming. Dr. Hebert speaks highly of you, and I am always, you know, when somebody's, when somebody is that appreciative and impressed with a candidate that they want to bring forward for a recommendation, it's always a good thing for the board to see that and see that, you know, quality here. So, definitely look forward to you being here. Congratulations, Dr. Laura, you've been very busy in your first, first, you know, main duty here, so I appreciate that. Looks like you found a very educated gentleman to fill this position, and look forward to your success. Any other comments?
I'd like to say congratulations to you both, and welcome aboard.
All right, Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Congratulations. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items J-1 through 8. J-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the conditional employment of Jason Tate as a substitute teacher effective August 20, 2018, pending the Ohio Department of Education's issuance of a teaching license. Mr. Tate will be compensated at the special substitute rate, BA Step 0 through September 30, 2018, per the terms outlined in the negotiated agreement with the Twinsburg Education Association. J-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Therapy and Motion LLC for the 2018-2019 school year to provide physical therapy services for students at the rate of $90 per hour. Total contract cost is not to exceed $35,000 without additional board approval, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. J-3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Educational Alternatives for three students for the 2018-2019 school year in the amount of $76,498, which includes a credit of $3,400 from the 2017-2018 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. J-4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a verification services agreement with K-12 School Consultants LLC for services related to student residency, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. J-5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement with Yankel and Associates, 12700 Lake Avenue, Suite Number 2505 Lakewood, Ohio 44107, and Ohio Schools Council, 6393 Oak Tree Boulevard, Suite 377 Independence, Ohio 44131, for an audit of the district's electric bills pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. J-6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the contract with Anderson Coach and Travel, 1 Anderson Plaza, Greenville, Pennsylvania 16125, for charter bus services for the spring 2019 eighth-grade Washington DC trip, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. Due to the necessity of securing services for the trip, this contract is pending updated certificate of liability insurance, which will be obtained by February 2019. J-7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Hilton, Washington DC North, Gathersburg, for hotel rooms for the spring 2019 eighth-grade Washington DC trip, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. Due to the necessity of securing hotel accommodations for the trip, this contract is pending updated certificate of liability insurance, which will be obtained by November 2018. J-8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a five-year sponsorship agreement with Visual Marketing Systems, 2097 East Aurora Road, Twinsburg, Ohio 44087, pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. Have a motion to accept Items J-1 through 8 as read.
Same.
Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, discussion?
I just want to make, mention that, that I think Items 2 and 3 are specific to our students that with special needs, and I just always like to make sure that people understand that contracting for services for needs that are outside the scope of some of the things that we do here in the district, there's a necessity to do that, and we, you know, I just want to make sure that there's clarification on that.
I want to commend the administration and the teachers and staff at Chamberlain for stepping forward and now entering the world of travel agencies. You know, it was a few short months ago that we were presented with an issue, and our staff stepped forward and made the trip, memorable trip happen without much interruption, and I don't think our kids knew the difference. And so, that was great, and it's good to see that, you know, we are now jumping on this and going to handle this in-house. We've got some tremendous teachers who have gone on this trip for years that are able to, you know, do quite a bit of the tour guiding down there, as well as the administrators stepping forward to secure these. I do hope this means, Superintendent Powers, that you do not have to drive down to Washington, DC to deliver a check, so that would be...
That is, sure.
Fantastic. That is good. And also, want to thank Visual Marketing Systems. They're a great local business in Twinsburg, and this sponsorship agreement provides the district with some, you know, much-needed updates to some of our signage at zero cost to us. So, I always, I always like to see, you know, and congratulate, you know, businesses for stepping forward, especially local businesses in our district. That's even, you know, to me, that's a greater sense of community, and they're a great business, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of the freshening up of some of these signs and banners that should be coming forth soon. So, thank you for securing that. And that also ties into, you know, that is, that is our, if I'm mistaken, that's our first of our secondary-tier sponsorships through our scoreboard initiative that we started last year.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's good. Any other additional comments? Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Items J-1 through 8, passage 4-0. Item J-9, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for a teacher of visually impaired for up to 70 hours at a rate of $91.50 per hour, an educational audiologist for up to 50 hours at a rate of $91.63 per hour, a teacher of hearing impaired for up to 80 hours at a rate of $84.88 per hour, and an orientation mobility trainer for up to 15 hours at a rate of $70.38 per hour for the 2018-2019 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Do I have a motion to accept Item J-9?
I'm in.
Mrs. Davis, do I have a second? I will second. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to make a comment or note that as an employee, I'm an employee of the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County, so just to avoid any perceived conflict of interest, I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Abstain.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
J-9 passes 3-0 with one abstention. Moving on to miscellaneous, any miscellaneous comments from my colleagues?
Just, welcome to the twins who are going to be coming here for the weekend events for twins' days, and it's always an exciting time driving around town and seeing, for lack of a better pun, just seeing double, but just, it's, the parades are always a great time. Just, I've heard comments, when I've gone to these twins' days, from people who have never been here before, how welcoming our community is, and how they look forward to coming here, and first-time twins or multiples who I've spoken to have said they plan on returning, returning because they've enjoyed their time, and then I've talked to twins who've been coming here year after year after year, and you start to see some familiar faces, too, once a year. But I just wanted to welcome the twins coming into our community this weekend.
Yeah, I would echo that. For probably the first few years that I've, since when I moved to Twinsburg, I was always led to believe that that's the time that you want to avoid, you know, going into town, because, you know, you get invaded by all these twins and triplets and quads and whatnot. But I've since, you know, attended the festivities and even, you know, participated in driving the carts and whatnot, and wow, you know, you just meet so many great people, a lot of great feedback, always good stuff that you hear about our town, and kind of how hospitable we are. So, I'm actually looking forward to attending the parade, seeing our students in the parade. Wow, that's going to be awesome, but also, you know, kind of going, going to the festival and, you know, just kind of enjoying, enjoying, you know, all, you know, all around, you know, what's happening in town. You know, also, it's kind of an exciting time. It's always great to see new staff coming onboard, seeing the current staff coming back from a relaxing vacation and starting to kind of get, get things going again. I follow Mrs. Powers' Twitter feed, so I see all of the pictures of the buildings, new and shiny floors, and, you know, nice new banner in the high school gym. Got to check that out. Got a new high school principal, and she's already up and going on her Twitter feed as well. So, you know, I'm just kind of looking forward to the beginning of the school year, believe it or not, just because we got a lot of new stuff going on, new construction happening, you know, and I've noticed that, so, you know, wow, how time flies. But, you know, here we are again, and looking forward to moving, moving on into the fall.
Anything? All right. That being said, I make a motion that the Board of Education enters into an executive session at 8:14 to discuss employment and compensation of public employees and the discipline of a student as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, second. Any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Board is now in executive session.